All right, good evening. It is a little after 5:30 and I will call to order the Planning Commission hearing for April 11th, 2018. We only have two items on the agenda for this evening. Item one that was initially on the agenda has been continued. The remaining two items are asterisked on the listing, and those are legislative and require municipal council decision. The Planning Commission this evening will be making recommendation to the municipal council on those items. Before we get started, we will have a prayer by Mr. Rowan and pledge allegiance by Ms. Ellsworth.
Our Father in Heaven, we offer thanks at the beginning of this Planning Commission meeting for the wonderful community that we live in. We are grateful for those who have worked hard to build this community, those who have gone before us, as well as those who are living here now. Grateful for the sacrifices that people have made, for us to be able to enjoy all that we enjoy. We're grateful for the opportunities available to us. We're grateful for the opportunities we have to develop our interests and talents and pursue lives that are satisfying to us. Pray that as we talk tonight about these items that we might be able to talk with insight and wisdom, help us to listen and hear one another and the public who are here to share their responses and ideas, help us to do what's best for the whole of Provo City. And we offer this prayer in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
Please stand and repeat the pledge with me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I'll take roll call now, and I would like each commissioner, starting with Mr. Howard, to state their name and whether they have a conflict of interest with any of the items this evening.
Andrew Howard, no conflicts.
Jayman Rowan, no conflicts.
Deborah Jensen, no conflicts.
Shannon Ellsworth, no conflicts.
Brian Smith, no conflicts.
Dave Anderson, no conflicts.
Thank you. All right, our first item on the agenda this evening.
Madam Chair, if we can just have a second, we're getting the visual ready.
No problem.
And so we'll have that up there.
All right, we'll just hang out for a minute.
How about it? Swept the Warriors? If he could have bet on that, like, six months ago.
This may take a little longer, so if you want to read it in, we can go from there.
All right, I'll go ahead and read it in. This is item two on the evening's agenda. Matt Baker requests a general plan text amendment to Chapter Six, Southwest Area Neighborhoods, to delete the housing density maximum of four units per acre. That's page six through forty-nine. This is affects the Fort Utah, Lakeview North, Lakeview South, Lakewood, Provo Bay, and Sunset Neighborhoods. And Brian Maxfield will present this this evening.
And within the text of the general plan in the Southwest area guiding principal policies and goals, which again applies to those six neighborhoods that you listed, the, it states, "Maintain the residential general plan designation with one-family residential development." Second sentence reads, "The aggregate gross density for any development or SDP," which is a specific development, or a specific development project, or something like that. You know what it is, Broadview Shores and some of those others, "should not exceed four units per acre except as designated in item number twelve." Now, item number twelve with that related to was a development that was on the corner of 820 North and Geneva Road, which has since been built. It's a townhouse development. Mr. Baker's request is to eliminate that second sentence, which limits, or at least directs that density should be limited to that four units per acre. And staff analysis of this, we look principally at a couple of things. First of all, I guess we should start that there's an active discussion on the four southern neighborhoods, the Fort Utah, the Provo Bay, the Sunset, and the Lakewood neighborhoods. That involves discussions of that density. However, at this time, nothing's been written down or proposed or anything else, but it is an active discussion of whether or not we should hold to that. As part of that discussion, and also in, as it applies to this area, a lot of that density was originally set up because of the sewer capacities and the planning for the utility lines to make sure we have sufficient capacity in existing or future lines, as well as the treatment plan itself. As you're probably also aware, there's been a lot going on in regards to the sewer. Looking at the capacity, the need to build a new sewer facility, sewer treatment plant, or, I'm sorry, wastewater treatment plant, and the recent discussion decision by council has been to build a new one. However, they still have to figure out the financing, the timing, and several other factors that come into play. And it may be in the end that that makes the density flexible. We don't know, though. And what we're saying is, it's, there's no, I guess, knowledge as to whether or not the density could be increased at this time related to this sewer. Now, other issues relate to specific areas where density may or may not increase. And again, in the Southwest Neighborhood Plan that involves the four southern neighborhoods, a lot of specific locations for higher-density pockets are being discussed. The two neighborhoods to the north, the Lakeview North and Lakeview South neighborhoods, north of the Provo River, that plan hasn't been started yet for that neighborhood plan. And the second part, besides the sewer issue, staff believes it may be premature to discuss that, where that density would go prior to a neighborhood plan being adopted. That could look at the most appropriate locations for higher density, if that is indeed deemed appropriate. So for those reasons, we have recommended against the text amendment, and we would say at this time, but the duration of our studying and everything and prepping for it, we think it does a disservice to continue it because it would probably extend way beyond six months or more before you're going to have answers in that regard. Any questions?
Any questions from the commissioners?
This, this might, this question might go to the applicant better, but Brian, you might know, but what's the impetus for this, this change? Is there, I mean, why? Is there something in the works? Is there something thought, being thought of?
Yeah, the applicant could bet aggressive, but I believe he'd like to look at the possibility of developing a higher density on his property.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions from the commissioners, from Mr. Maxfield? If not, I'll invite the applicant to come forward, Mr. Baker. And please state your name for the record.
There's not too much that I can add to what we're discussing or anything to give for the general overview, with the exception of, I mean, a lot has changed, especially in those neighborhoods in that area since this general plan before that, those neighborhoods was not specifically, a lot of the corridors going through there, the new connection road to the airport. And quite frankly, you know, Provo, as you guys know, is running out of landtime. So there's, density has to go somewhere. I know everybody says, you know, my backyard, so you might be asked, you're not going to like it. But to add in, the established neighborhoods, we know it's going to come and increase the density there, but where we have new corridors and new routes of transportation that are going to be waterlogged, residential type streets, I think it makes a lot of sense to consider increasing, or at least not, I mean, there'll still be specific zoning over it, it'll still limit the amount of housing to be in there. But I think having this conclusion in there, that in the general plan limits the ability of property to be developed even under current zoning, as I mentioned, there is some, I can't remember exactly involved, but maybe the PDU, but any of the planned development, or some of the type that allow great density in general, based on zoning, but based on this general plan, wouldn't allow for that. So what do we end up with? As was mentioned, item number, or paragraph number twelve, we've got this cookie cutter where we cut out exceptions for certain people and certain projects. So I still think that that's the best way to plan, the general plan going forward. And I do own property out there. I know that there's several other developments that are looking at going out there that are higher density. And I'm told also at this time that there is a general review of the general plan. And so I was told this was an appropriate time to make this request, and having it brought up and having it be considered going forward. We mentioned, I'm sure there are some studies that still need to be done, including the sewer. I would be okay with taking that as necessary in order to get some more information. It's longer than six months. It's going to be longer than six months in a way. But now's the time, I think, to address it, when the general plan is being addressed. When the sewer lines are being addressed, quite frankly, definitely it'd be a disservice to go the other route, to address how much sewer capacity you need based on this general plan, and then to address it and say, well, we're going to actually increase the density, we need more sewer. But it seems like the backwoods are doing it. It's like you want to look at one thing that you probably want, and then whether you're going to actually do the sewer, or other things that might be capacity related, to then actually know what your density is going to be going forward. So I think, again, there's been a lot of changes. You guys are also aware of all the multi-density stuff that's coming down, the new resources on the west side, and that corridor has a lot of services, and that precinct, and the new corridor coming in there. I mean, I think your closing services and the construction program, I think it's a good, that brings a long cut. Got any questions?
Any questions for Mr. Baker? If none, thank you. Okay, I'd like to invite any neighborhood chairs who are present, who would like to speak to this item. Please come forward and state your name for the record.
Beth Alford, Southwest area representative, and also lately the chairman of the chair. Lots of stuff coming in my head right now, so I'm going to try and check it down for you. I, first, I want to appreciate the staff with the analysis they did, and the recommendations they made. Right now, at this point in time, with Mr. Kennedy working on the master plan for those four southern neighborhoods and appropriate density in appropriate places, considering the conditions out in that area with the water tables and other factors going in, I think, at this point in time, this is a limiting factor.
It's on.
It's on a pyramid.
Oh, leaning. Oh, hey, I'm going to feel like I'm eating the mic for the rest of the night. That's okay. With, okay, where was I? With the limiting factors of the area, with the fact that we're looking at the master plan for the area, with the fact that they are doing a study on the capacity of the lift stations out there, we should, one, I think we should need wait for that, for that study to come in, to kind of see where it's going. This will limit those areas that are tagged residential right now, so that we aren't putting more capacity on the sewer lines right now, as what is, what they can handle until we do get those studies out and we do get that analysis in. As for the Lakeview North and Lakeview South neighborhoods, we're kind of looking at this west side master plan for the four southern neighborhoods, and then looking to those neighborhoods and kind of either continuing the policies up, or creating different policies considering on where densities are appropriate. I know Orem is starting to put in high density along Geneva Road. You've got 270 townhomes coming in just on the north side of 2,000 North, and I heard a rumor, which I'm really hoping isn't true, that the property north of that was sold for higher-density apartments. So Geneva is going to become a limiting factor until the Parkway is completed, but the Parkway is not going to be completed for a long time until that delta restoration project is done. So at this point in time, I see this as a good thing to help kind of slow down development until we can get the idea of what the area really needs, where density is appropriate in the area, and how it's going to change the characteristics out there. Is it going to be better for the area, or is it going to be worse? And I think taking the time to find that out would be much better than just saying, okay, let's just take that statement out so that you can zone it any way you want it to. So, any questions for me? Nope?
Yeah.
Yes?
Mr. Rowan?
One quick question. I mean, I appreciate Mr. Baker's concern about the timing, in terms of, well, if we, if we plan, say, sewer capacity, for example, under the current zoning of four units per acre, that does seem a bit backwards, because then we don't plan for the possibility of higher density. But as you are, as you are working to...
I was going to say, I have a comment to that, actually.
Yeah, I mean, but, but what I'm hearing from you, and I just want to clarify, is that, no, it's not that you're, you're, as you're thinking about the, the plans for these neighborhoods, west of I-15, that it's not that you're just planning only for four, four residents per acre or less, but that you are, part of that is also envisioning, where might we want higher density, so that that might address some of, some of those concerns about, well, are we only, are we kind of only looking forward with the limitation of four units per acre? I mean, is that an accurate statement, do you think? Or are you not wanting at all anything more than four units per acre?
In my perfect world, I would love it all to be agriculturally preserved, in my perfect world. I understand we don't live in a perfect world. And I understand that the affordable housing issue has been coming up a lot in the city. And so we have to address concerns like that. But I think we need to do it in a very organized manner, in where those densities are appropriate. Because if you stick 100 apartments out in the middle of a field somewhere, transportation, accessibility, I mean, you're talking about the whole package, and how is that going to affect the neighborhood as a whole? But if you're looking at bringing it more towards the freeway and major arteries, that's an appropriate place to put density. So, like I said, right now, limiting the density until we have those in, in place allows us to look at the whole picture first, before we just allow everything to build. And the sewer, if you look at the, at the master plan for the backbone of the sewer system that they're going to be building out on the west side, it's a pretty hefty backbone that they're going to be building out there. So I'm not concerned about capacity at this point in time, even if we decide to do higher densities out there. You've got two sleeves under the freeway for 36-inch pipes. One of them's being used, one of them's not being used. So if the sewer system goes out there, they have the ability bringing all this stuff from the east side. And if I'm totally wrong, please correct me, bringing all of that capacity from the east side, and you're still going to have the major pipelines out on the west side to, to help that density and have the capacity to accommodate that density.
Yeah, so, I mean, in other words, just to reiterate, you are, you are thinking about, yeah, where, where, I mean, in other words, you're not saying, we don't want any high density, we don't want to, we don't want to bear the burden of any affordable housing, we just want to be smart about where it goes, but you're imagining that, and, yeah, okay, great.
Yeah, okay.
Any other questions from the commissioners? Thank you.
Thanks.
I'd like to invite any other neighborhood chairs who are present to speak to this item. Please state your name.
Jonathan Hill, Fort Utah Neighborhood Chair. So, yeah, this is kind of close, isn't it? Okay, so I think Beth kind of summed up our feelings quite well. I'm also working on the committee with the Southwest Plan. This is, this is a plan that has citizen involvement. It involves representatives of builders, of landowners, of people from the neighborhoods, working together to figure out where the density is best. And some of the things I just wanted to reiterate that she talked about, is that you can have the kind of growth that really sinks the city, tax-based wise, cost-wise, et cetera, and the kind of growth that really helps the city to become sustainable, both financially and environmentally. And we are looking carefully at those kinds of ideas and trying to see where can we put higher density that won't make us build or widen roads way out to the edge of town, for example. I was talking to someone, they were talking about what they were reading about sustainable growth, and how cities really do need to be densest in the middle, and then grow out and be less dense towards the edges. Because if you think about how many miles of road you have to build for someone on the edge to get downtown versus someone that already lives downtown, it's just much more... someone that already lives downtown, it's just much more sustainable that way. And we're talking about the edge of town, right, when we talk about this. And so, all that we ask is that the commission give us time to go through these plans, to figure out where the densities are best, and not just kind of open it up for any developer. Because these costs can get out of control, we can have unsustainable development in the future. And as far as affordable housing, adding more density out there actually will not change the cost of homes that much, period. We had a developer come, they wanted to put townhomes out on the very, very west end of Center Street. So, an economist in my, in my neighborhood did an analysis, and he showed that allowing that would change the inventory of homes in Provo by .001 percent, or something like that. It was an extremely small change for a high density in a pocket that really isn't built for that kind of density. And so, we can't just open up to developers, we can't just let them build whatever density they want anywhere, because it's not going to help us, and it might cost us a lot. And so, we hope that you guys will deny it as well. One last comment, too. Nobody from my neighborhood is here. I just want you guys to know that's not because they don't care about this. They are very, very supportive of the current limit of four units per acre. I told them that staff was recommending denial, that the neighborhood chairs would be there to recommend denial as well. And so, you know, that's why I told them not to come, to save their energy for another one. And so, I hope that you realize that they do support it, and they do care about it. So...
I have a question for Mr. Hill.
Yeah.
Hi, I'm Andrew Howard. Question is, you've been talking about your neighborhood committee's been working as a part of a process to evolve a plan in conjunction with other neighborhoods.
Right.
Can you briefly give us a synopsis of how that's going, and have you been given any timeline for when it might be completed? I know the city might have a...
Do you guys want to comment on that?
I'm just trying to get an idea where we are in this, in this process.
So, they're both committee members on the west side committee. The west side plan will go from the Provo River south to the I-15. So, it does not include the north neighborhoods where Ms. Alligood lives, those are the neighborhoods she was talking about, but it's the south neighborhoods from the river to the freeway. The land use map, projecting future land uses, is as done as it's going to be. So, I think it may be well for us to go ahead and take the map out to begin to get public input on that, while chapters of the plan are being written. In the past, we've pretty much gotten the whole plan put into book form, then we've taken that out to public, to public input. And it seems like that that process has been weighty, we've struggled through that process. So, maybe we're better off, this time, breaking it up into pieces, and taking those pieces out for public input. And the first one would be the, the land use map. So, that land use map anticipates four units to the acre over the entire west side, but it clusters where it makes sense, higher densities where it makes sense, and lower densities where those make sense, and where should be open space. So, we're true to our capital improvement planning that's been going on for years and years and years, but it moves the density around, shifts it around to where, at this point, we think it makes sense. Now, when we get public input, we probably end up making changes based on public input, but that's how it's shaping up. I think that kind of answers your question, Mr. Rowan. I'm hoping to get the plan done this summer, because Brian's been told he's got to finish it before he retires.
Well, and I'm, I'm asking because Mr. Baker wants to develop his property, they want to see things coming. I'm just trying to get an idea, simply, well, at this hearing, I think Mr. Baker's given his input. I, I don't think that we should change anything until we've, we've seen the bigger picture. And I'm just trying to understand where we are in that process.
I mean, along with that, we've had two developers approach us. They have, or will soon have, land under contract between the river and Center Street in my neighborhood out on the west side. And I've shown them the land use map as it stands, and they've been designing their developments to fit what it's probably going to look like. And so, it doesn't stop development. They can still make these plans and move forward based on the projected plan that's going to come out. So, it's not like we're saying, we won't talk to you. We're still working with them and talking with them, so that when the plan does go through, they can move forward very quickly at that point.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Hill, from the commissioners? No, thank you. Are there any other neighborhood chairs who would like to speak to this item? If not, are there any members of the public who would like to speak to this item? Please just state your name for the record, please.
I will, when I get there. Not sure I'm going to reach that. Well, I said I wasn't sure. I'm sure I can manipulate it somehow. My name is Don Barr. I live in the Lakeview North neighborhood, 1969 North Geneva Road, right south of the 200 and some odd unit project that Orem is developing. I was just looking at what was left after that sentence was taken out, and it makes no sense at all, maintain the residential general plan designated with one-family residential development. If he wants to remain, if he wants to remain true to what he wants, he ought to ask that there be no limits at all, because it doesn't make sense the way it is right now with his proposal. I have a slight jaundiced view of what developers ask for. We have, across the street from us, an 80-unit apartment that was sold to the neighborhood originally as condos and so on and so forth, and it is now a mid-grade apartment with lots of turnover and so on and so forth. And so, what is sold is often not what is actually built. And living across the street from it, and I have friends who live on the other side of it, we deal with the consequences of that. And we would much have preferred something like the crossed-out area there. So, I support you in your initial decision to not approve this at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Are there any other members of the public who would like to speak to this item?
Do you have a moment to respond to a couple things, or something?
Yes, sir. Mr. Baker?
Thank you. Just briefly to address your question, or both of what you guys, questions you asked. When they're saying we don't want to exceed four units, this is the general plan, it covers a large area. So, what they're saying is, we don't want four, more than four units per acre anywhere in the area. If you want to get specific about where it's appropriate, and corridors, and where it would be appropriate to do, that's what you use zoning for, and that's what they're zoning out there. So, the zoning would still limit, and zoning can be applied to the appropriate areas. So, saying we don't want in excess of four units per acre isn't, doesn't mean in appropriate areas, non-appropriate areas, it just means we don't want it anywhere in this area. That, more density can be determined based on zoning. So, there's already another layer there that takes care of that. And I'm sure I don't have to tell you guys, you've done this long enough, that if I had 100 homeowners here, all 100 of them, they would tell you they don't want development happening in their backyard, because everybody thinks it's nice that I bought a place here and lived here, and my place is able to be developed, but don't you dare come live next door to me, which I always find ironic. So, yeah, I didn't have any expectation that anybody would say, yeah, build more stuff. But I think you guys understand that that's a reality that needs to happen. And it does impact housing. If you quit, although it might be .001 percent, every .001 percent adds up, more housing helps, keeps costs down. It's all part of the puzzle. So, yeah, that's what I wanted to respond, just to explain, that there already is zoning in place that would cover where it's appropriate, but saying no to the whole general plan just means, no, we don't want any more density anywhere in this place. So, thanks.
Thank you. Right, I will turn the discussion back over to the commissioners for comment and emotion. Yes.
Yeah, I have a question for, for Mr. Mcfield. And what's your response to, to Mr. Baker's comment that, that this is already covered, or this is already too broad citywide?
I think that's a lot of what's being discussed in the, in the Southwest Plan. Again, it's not the two neighborhoods where Mr. Baker's property is, but it applies, you know, for the, the larger area, that there are appropriate areas where higher density could function much better. Certainly not blanket, you know, that everything can go crazy on it. And certainly zoning can control that. But the idea of the general plan is to give you policies that then guide the rezoning of properties. And that's what we're hoping with the neighborhood plans, to get much more specific to neighborhoods as to what the appropriate zonings would be, then we can adopt, you know, maps and things that reflect that a lot more closely to the neighborhoods. And again, I think the Southwest Plan for the four neighborhoods to the north, I'm sorry, to the south, is certainly underway, and I think we can expect comments and progress made on that in the near future. The two neighborhoods to the north, however, have not started neighborhood plan, and so, I don't know how to give you a timetable on that one. Taking it off now, if someone came in to rezone it, we wouldn't have a, a great recommendation on the rezoning, again, because we're fighting sewer capacities, we're, we're trying to determine, you know, what those appropriate locations are. One of the things we felt mentions happening on the, on the northern portion is the consideration for freeway interchange at 820 North and Geneva Road, basically in that area. We're not saying that has to lead to higher density by any means, but it really gives a reason to relook at some of the land uses through that area. The new high school gives a lot of, of consideration in that way. And the development happening in Orem, all of those are factors that need to be taken into account.
Thanks. I, I frankly think that this is, it's going to happen. There's going to be increased density along corridors and collector roads and things like that, that needs to happen. But timing is the issue right now, I think. I think you'll see, once these, the, the west side plan is done, once the neighborhood plans, which the neighborhood plans are going to be neighborhood plans, and they're all going to say, nobody wants anything more than R-110 everywhere, and we all want happy stores and commerce. But, I mean, that aside, not that they're, they are important, they're very important, but I, I think it's a timing thing right now, honestly. But I do believe that eventually you will see increased density, this, that's more than four units per acre on, on corridors and, and areas where it makes sense. We've already seen it in the, in the north area of the city, on University Avenue next to the Riverwoods, thank you. So, yeah, I think it's a timing thing, but I think you will see it. So...
Any other comments by the commissioners?
I mean, my, my only comment would be that, yes, the sewer is still an issue in that area. It's, I, I know that Public Works is working on all the engineering solutions, and that's not completed yet. Certainly, the Southwest neighborhood plan is well underway, and actually has moved along pretty quickly. We have a, a good stakeholder group of property owners and business owners and other interests. And they, I, I think the idea of adopting the land use plan, or the land use map first, or getting that out for public input, is pretty important, because that will truly guide, you know, densities. And, and I will say that the residents that are participating in the neighborhood plan have been willing to look at increased density in areas that make sense. And there's been quite a bit of discussion about that, even where some commercial uses could be placed. So, they really are looking at it comprehensively, and it seems to be a process that's worked pretty well.
I'd like to make a motion.
Mr. Rowan.
I for to that point. Regards to item number two, Matt Baker's request for a general plan text amendment to chapter six of the Southwest Area Neighborhoods to delete the housing density maximum of four units per acre. I recommend that we deny this application to amend the general plan to the municipal council.
Is there a second for that motion?
I second the motion.
Seconded by Mr. Anderson. All those in favor of denial, or recommending a denial to municipal council on this matter?
Aye.
Okay. Any opposed? Right, we will forward a recommend, recommendation for denial to municipal council on item two. All right, item three, Brady Duscher requests an ordinance amendment to section 14.50, parentheses 10 dot 170, parking, loading, and access in the Arbers on the Avenue Pro Zone, to allow for motorcycle parking to count towards the vehicle parking requirement. And this is in the River Bottoms neighborhood.
First of all, I hope you got the email that corrected the cover page. It's kind of conflicting recommendations there. But if you did read through the analysis, staff has always supported the idea, you know, they're ways through the ordinance or other things that we could reduce parking. I know there's a big push now to increase parking in certain areas. In this instance, the applicant's requesting that we go down to this, and now, he requested 20, let's see, one park, one motorcycle parking space for every 50 required vehicle parking. Let me correct that. Two motorcycle spaces would count as one. And so, it would be two motorcycle spaces would count for one space out of every 50, could be counted as a required space. Does that make sense? Is there any question? Probably should have just read it, that may have been clear. The intent here is to really give some flexibility in some of the developments. However, when we looked at this, the original application was more citywide in its function, and I don't think we're ready to, to get to that point yet. We think it's really, there is some merit in that consideration. But we felt, because the applicant's direct project is Arbers on the avenue, that it would be better to tie to that specific project, and look on that as kind of a laboratory, and see if it works and how well it works. And there are a number of reasons for that. One, it is limited on its influence on other projects because of its location. But it's also one that I think, because of the nature, it's not a student apartment building, it's not set up that way, the distance from campus and, and other things. It's more of a, if anything, single young professionals, or probably not a lot of families situations in there. It's a little more limited that way. So, there was kind of a feeling, you're not really afraid of getting a lot of cars on the site, you know, we're going to have three people living in an apartment as much as you may in other places. So, we felt this may be a good place to, to try and look at that. And so, we did recommend in favor, again, but it has changed, the, the change to 50 rather than the 25, that then it wouldn't be as, at least the initial part wouldn't be, I guess, as scary. Really, you're only talking about three spaces. And in reality, you're not getting rid of spaces as much as you are creating some motorcycle spaces in more convenient areas. So, it's, it's not like you're racing the other spaces at all. You're, you know, finding some that would, would give him the number they need. Now, you did get a letter from the Arbers HOA that I handed out before the meeting. I'm not sure if you had time to read that. Basically, it's from Chris Carr, who's the president. And maybe I can just quickly read that in, if that's okay. "The Arbers HOA is felt forced into an agreement with the developer of the adjacent south property. This agreement is largely a detriment to the current HOA, and parking is just one of the issues being railroaded through the approval process. The original development agreement called for a maximum of 60 units, so it is a surprise that 68 units have been contemplated, much less approved. Allowing this proposed change, allowing motorcycle parking spaces to be counted as parking spaces, should not be approved. Not only will it continue to compound the burden the HOA is carrying because of this new project, but it will also fill the east side of University Avenue in front of the project with parked cars. Technically, it is a no parking zone, but with a non-red painted curb and only two small no parking signs along the entire length of the property line. The no parking rule is largely ignored and rarely enforced." If I can address that a little bit. Okay, the first statement, I... Okay, the first statement, in some ways, is a little offensive to staff, and I'm not sure how it's meant, I hope it wasn't meant that way, but this project was not railroaded through. You know, some of you may have recalled when this was heard a couple of years ago, the amendment was made to go to 68 units on this project. It went back and forth, had input from the then HOA, who then approved it. And their agreement signed and things were done. So there's been nothing done, railroaded through. And I, you know, I don't think that's, should really be considered an issue. But the other one is they're talking about parking on University Avenue. People parked on University Avenue out of convenience. No matter how many spaces you had on site, there's going to be parking on University Avenue. And we're not even sure whether some of that parking is from the apartments or the condo units are from across the street with Riverwoods. And so, again, when this project hasn't been built yet, it's hard to also say that there's an overwhelming impact. There's no knowledge of what that impact would be until it actually occurs. So staff, you know, feels that the proper things were done to amend the zone before. And I think we still feel that there's, we would support a recommendation for approval of this request because we think it is a good way to address situations without creating a, what, an overwhelming situation to start off with. I don't know how to word that right, maybe, hopefully you know what I mean. It's one of the baby steps. It gives us a way to do baby steps, if I can say it that way. Any questions?
Any questions for Mr. Maxfield? Mr. Rowan?
So, remind me again of how many parking spots will be in, attached to this development?
With 68 units, let's see, I've got it in there, I know.
Times two.
Times 2.25. I apologize, I had that memorized last week.
So the-
I think it was 100 and-
About 150, or a little bit less than 150.
And the, they were short two spaces to be able to get that 68th unit. They can get 67 units and one space extra. So they feel that moving things around and being able to count two parking spaces as one additional one, if they can put four motorcycle parking spaces in, then they would get that 68th unit.
So this is, so there would be, of the, about 150 spaces-
One, yeah.
There could potentially be three normal parking spaces that would be converted to a total of six motorcycle-
That's correct, with the change to 50. If it were 25, there'd be twice as many, obviously.
Right. Okay.
Mr. Howard?
Do we, do we want to consider bicycles? I mean, you know, we got motorcycles, we could have five bicycles, no?
I think they're already included in the plan.
I think so. I'm forward-thinking here, I'm just, I was thinking of Jamin.
Thank you.
Ms. Ellsworth?
Are we trying to rationalize this based on the perceived demographic that will occupy this development?
I wouldn't say rationalize. I think, again, it's a great test area because you have a different demographic. Certainly in a student area, I don't know if that's the case. I remember my roommate had a motorcycle back when I was in school, but he also had a car. So I think you'd need a lot more study, and that's one reason we hesitated to apply it citywide. We felt you had a more controlled situation here without, again, releasing some overwhelming change that would occur. So I, I don't know, we're trying to rationalize it here. As much as we're looking on it, yeah, this is a great place to see if that works. What we feel is there are changes that need to be made to our parking requirements. This is one of those we should consider.
This is the kind of give and take that normally happens during projects of this type. I mean, that's why the variables there.
It's a pro-development, right. Pro-developments are more negotiated sort of situations. This originally had a larger requirement on parking. It was like 2.5 or something like that instead of 2.25. And that was one of the changes made, where they reduced the overall parking for the project after the first 50 units were constructed. Their existing two buildings have a total of 50 units right now, and this one would have the 68.
Mr. Smith?
Thank you, Chair. I'm curious about, to the math of the size of the stalls, the recommended width for the motorcycle parking is four feet in width and seven feet in length. What's the current width of the normal parking space? Is it a two-to-one exchange?
Yes, it was 18 by eight and a half, basically. So you could, you could split one up.
Yeah, to me, that makes a lot of sense. I mean, I'll talk more about it later in a minute, but, yeah. Thanks.
Any other questions for Mr. Maxfield? If not, I'd invite the applicant, Mr. Duscher, to come forward. And I apologize if I mispronounced your name.
All right, Duscher.
Good share.
Thank you for taking a look at this. We, I didn't, I didn't receive a copy of that note from the HOA president. He's, three HOA presidents from the time that we have done this deal. So there's been one that had the quorum, we voted, so that's offensive to us as well because we had the quorum, they were supportive. The next HOA president came in, we actually met with planning staff, and they came to meetings to support us on everything that we did. And then he came in here and took a look at everything and is trying to blow it all up, saying we ram-rodded things through when we've been in front of planning commissions and city councils and planning this whole time. There's been nothing that we've done that's been secret or anything. It's been voted on by HOA presidents prior to him, and we haven't changed anything except for this yet. And so we are one space short. We originally had parking galore, but we were cutting into the hillside so much that we met with our engineering staff, and they said, "You're going to need to pin the hill back," because it's already been pinned, "you're going to need to pin the hill back in these parking areas." About 166 pins, and they run about $1,500 each. So we go, "Well, there's $250,000 for a couple of parking spaces. Let's scale it back a little bit, find other places to put parking." And what we came up with was, we are one space short. And so we have 67 units worth of parking. We have two, we have 265 spaces, we need 266. And so we had always planned, I'm, I manage buildings as well, we had always planned, and I've been pushing the owners of this to, "Let's put motorcycle parking here," because one of my requirements in any place when I travel is, I need a pool and I need a buffet breakfast. And I just got back from spring break with my kids, and the first place we stayed and didn't have that, and we moved because of that. Growing, I went, I went to school at BYU, we stayed at Branbury, my roommates and I had motorcycles, we kept the motorcycles. For those of us who have cars and a motorcycle, we felt guilty. So we put the motorcycle on the grass or on the sidewalk. And then we got flack from people because now we have motorcycles on the sidewalk and the grass. And so then we just went and took up parking spaces with them. And then we tried to pile them up, but then we couldn't do that because then somebody couldn't get out. And so there's always a problem with our motorcycles. And so where I work right now is up by the country club. I park my motorcycle, there's another guy that has a big Victory, and there's two others that are down the street, and we all just take up spaces. And so they've actually, I manage that area, they've contacted through the HOA, the manager, to say, "What can we do about the motorcycles?" I go, "Well, okay." So I started putting my bike in a little illegal area, this little area, and so we got flack about that. So then I put it up at a dead-end sidewalk, and somebody said, "Why is this motorcycle on the sidewalk?" And I go, "What do you want me to do? Okay, I'll take up a space again." So motorcycles, for those of us who drive, we try to be considerate, but there's no place to put them without taking up a whole car space. So, and then we're aware of places, the University Mall has motorcycle parking, and I know where it is and I park in it. And BYU, Primary Children's Hospital, Fashion Place Mall has a good spot, and they're always right up front, very convenient, and I love to park there. And so what we're planning on doing is taking up two spaces and striping them for motorcycles, designating them motorcycle parking with signs and everything next to the handicap parking right up front, so it's more convenient. We looked at stuff from other cities that have done this, and we wanted to do, to add, we thought about the bicycle element because other cities have, you have to have motorcycle parking, and then for every 20 bicycles, that also counts. But we're thinking, you know, we're way up here, it's not really for students, you have to have a permanent space off of, so they're not, you know, but right now, parked at Arbers are six motorcycles, and there's a bike rack in their parking. So they're complaining about parking, but they've got motorcycles and a bike rack taking up parking spaces. And so we're going to come in, stripe motorcycle parking, and we're going to solve a bunch of problems because there's going to be people living in our place that have, there's six people now at Arbers that have motorcycles. We're going to come in and stripe some motorcycle parking, and it's going to make up for that one space that we need. That's what, that's all we have. Thank you.
Any questions from the commissioners for Mr. Duscher? If not, thank you. Are there any neighborhood chairs present who would like to speak to this matter? Please come forward and state your name for the record.
Hi, I'm Dave Rosen, I'm the River Bottoms Neighborhood Chair. And we put out notice, I sent, noticed over 400 people, and got about five responses. So this is not a high response area, but those that responded were not necessarily negative about the request for the motorcycles. In fact, many of them felt like it going to the 50 that the city has recommended was a good compromise. And so they weren't against that. The ones that were against it are the, those that the HOA, and the record is, has been read in here. Chris Carr has concerns as an HOA in dealing with parking. That is an issue. The state came in and made it no parking all along University Avenue when the bicycle lanes went in. And although they are not enforcing it here in the city, sometimes, at some point in time, they're going to. And so they're anticipating there may be some forcing of those cars off the street in it. But one of the concerns that the neighbors had in the area, again, along University Avenue, is the continued placing of right-in, right-out accesses or free-flowing accesses across University Avenue in an area that is going 50 miles an hour. There are concern for the safety of those that are going to live in those residences. And this particular Phase 2 of the Arbers, as it abuts up against Canyon Brook, has a prime opportunity to put a light in for the exit and entrance of Riverwoods, their north University Avenue exit that is straight across the street from these. We know that there were some discussions initially between the Phase 2 and Canyon Brook people. We're sorry that those did not work out, but that's, that's where the neighbors are most concerned, is that we're going to have a major accident there as people go in and out. In order for that access to happen, there would have to be additional parking spaces given up. There are some elevation issues between Canyon Brook and the Arbers as well. But I suspect that that is going to be an issue that's going to come up in front of the city down the road. Whether it's addressed now or not, there are a number of residents expressing that this, the city and the planning commission may be forced an issue and say this ought to be looked at in a little more emphasis so that we protect those that are turning in and out and across University Avenue. I know I discussed this issue with Mayor Curtis a number of months ago when the, when the Riverwoods opened up for a free-flowing and also when the bicycle lanes went in. And I know there's been some discussions with the transportation people in the state of Utah about lights along there, and as development continues to go in, I think that's a bigger issue than, than what is being proposed today, that some motorcycle spots be made available. As a former motorcycle rider, I appreciate where those spots are, appreciate that they're there. As a car driver now, I personally dislike a motorcycle that takes up a full spot, usually in a prime location. So I'm not, I'm personally not against what is being asked, and I don't think our neighborhood as a whole considers this a major issue. I'm with Brian, I think it's a good trial for the city to look at in a very unique and specific area that isn't citywide. If this was coming citywide, as a neighborhood chair, I'm very much against it. But for this specific planned area, I think we're not against what's being asked.
Thank you, Mr. Rosen. Any questions for Mr. Rosen from the commissioners? No, thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other neighborhood chairs who would like to speak to this item? Any members of the public who would like to come forward and speak on this item? If not, I will turn it back over to the commissioners. Mr. Smith?
So I work at Newscan, and in underground parking, there's about every day six to, six or seven motorcycles. And half of them are pretty good about backing in and to the right, so the next motorcycle can back into the front and to the left and use two per stall. Some aren't, and they take up the whole spot. And when I drive my truck, I don't like them. When I drive my motorcycle, I scoot in right next to them, even though they're parked right in the middle, you could put two bikes in there. So I think this is a good thing. I think this is something that should be done. Turning two into, turning one into two for every 50 is not that big of an issue, it's not that big of a deal. Other apartment complexes around the city, you're already seeing people be creative with the parking of their bike, and sometimes they'll pull it in and then turn it sideways and then park their car in front of it, so their car sticks out a little ways. So there's creative things going on. But, yeah, this is a good, a good tester, and I think this makes sense. I would, I would be in favor of it.
Ms. Ellsworth?
I'm all in favor of parking creativity, but I do wonder about kind of the, the long-term repercussions. Only 14% of motorcycle drivers are women, and, and this is a demographic that is, you know, mostly middle-aged men. So I wonder how, not just this development, but overall, if this were to continue in the city, how would we be accommodating people who don't drive motorcycles? And, and are we, are we really considering, you know, kind of broader or other minorities within this parking situation? Does that make sense? I hope so.
I'm in favor of the, of the proposal as written by the staff. And if you're willing to entertain in a motion, I'd be happy to make it.
I think that would be appropriate.
Madam Chairman, I recommend that the planning commission recommends to the council approval of Exhibit A as prepared by the staff, to which motorcycle parking spaces may be counted as required parking, subject to the following: For no more than one out of every 50 required vehicle parking spaces, two motorcycle parking spaces may be substituted for one required vehicle parking space. And, and the rest of that goes with it.
I second that motion.
Seconded by Mr. Anderson. All those in favor of forwarding a positive recommendation to municipal council?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed, so that passes unanimously, we'll forward a positive recommendation to municipal council.
I'd like to make a motion that we adjourn.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Mr. Howard. So adjourned.